Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the July 5th, 2023 regular session of the Board of Public Utilities. We would like to thank everyone who's here in the room with us tonight, everybody who's viewing online or listening otherwise. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. It's both being recorded in audio form and video form. As always, there is a public comment section of the agenda and community members who wish to speak this evening will be asked to provide their name and address and then have five minutes to speak. If you are in the room and you would like to speak, please sign in over here at the table right inside the door. If you are online on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your app. Please note that we would like any comments from the public directed to the board itself. And please note that the public comment portion of tonight's meeting is not a part of the rate hearing. And staff will not answer questions related to the rate hearing or the rates themselves. If you are connected by phone only tonight, please press star nine to indicate that you wish to speak and address the board during the public comment section. As stated, the comments are limited to five minutes. We do caution visitors making comments that this is an open meeting. It is public. Please do not disclose confidential information or disclose account information about your account or an account that is not in your name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history during an open meeting for the same reasons. As always, the public may call or email BPU with any concerns. The agenda for this evening may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, it will appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position three, and I'm the current board president. Other members of our board and staff include Mr. Bill Johnson, the general manager, Mr. David Haley, member at large, position two, Mr. Tom Groneman, second district and current board vice president, Mr. Bob Mylan, first district and current board secretary, Mr. Jeff Bryant, third district, Mrs. Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position number one, and Angela Lawson, our acting chief counsel. I would remind everyone, please put your phones on silent and please be aware that the microphones that are in the room are extremely sensitive. They can pick up and can record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin the actual meeting tonight, would you please rise and join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of religion and one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask our board, I'm sorry, Angela, can you please take roll call?
Roll call Haley.
Present.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections, edits, et cetera.
Seeing none, move to approve.
My second.
The motion to approve tonight's agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 21, 2023, I'll ask if there are any edits, corrections, et cetera.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We've got a motion to approve and a second, the approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 21st, 2023. Roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have three people signed up in attendance here. First, I'll call on Ty Gorman. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the board.
Hello, Ty Gorman. 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, ACK. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the board public hearing on the rate case and to really drive home that fixed costs on the bills hurt low-income customers, hurts them the most. It also hurts efficiency and charging low-income customers an even higher percentage of income is a terrible way of dealing with the budget problems that BPU faces, especially when federal money is available and different innovations can be taken to to support that part of the rate base. Truing up to cost of service was talked about a whole lot by the industry practices crowd at the public hearing, and I think that was disingenuous. Many other municipalities which were provided in written comments have making made decisions, political decisions, to support the people that were hurting the most instead of blindly following in some kind of industry standard cost of service matching, even even if it's staggered a little bit in favor of residential customers, there's no reason not to be innovative with how the costs match the revenue that's created. Mr. Brown, for example, used industry standards to allocate costs to customer classes. I mean, computers can complete that process in a in a few minutes. There's no reason to go through this. Rate case for that, the point of the board accountable to the people is to advocate, innovate on their behalf. And, you know, I want BPU to succeed. I want the trust of the folks to be regained in the utility. I want to be having seeing the board and the staff advocating for the people to meet the needs of the community by bringing in federal dollars, by making different investment choices and by a different public engagement process for the low-income folks. And there's no reason not to overlay that industry standards with policy objectives. No constraints were included, no differentiation between small and large business needs or high and low-income residential needs within the rate case process. The ability to pay changes the equation for utility revenue recovery. I mean, the the people in the room last the at the hearings, we're talking about squeezing blood from a stone. And that's not just a bad idea, you know, from the stone's point of view. It doesn't work when you just start punishing with fees, disconnections, flat charges, folks who are can't even pay the bills and they get thrown off the bills. It costs more money than it saves to try to match that cost to those customer classes. The point is, you should probably move away from industry standards so that you're not crushing the customers. You're hoping to get the money from there. Then a RUC and AR, you see classification processes as a baseline, progressive utility commissioners can and should join others around the country. And the sources have been provided in the rate case as well as written. You can Google it and find a lot of other great examples. But it would obviously be impossible for most customers in the county to pay all the costs, the electric system they're associated with. You know, that brings us, I think, to to the public engagement process. And, you know, people kind of asked during the hearing, why aren't you with us? Why are you? Why is the staff making a lot of money? Why aren't the utility folks that are supposed to advocate for us fighting for resources for us instead of having a defensive line of two and a half hours of presentations describing all the costs possible?
You have one minute.
Intricate detail that the people had to sit through before they were even allowed to comment, which was obviously really painful for folks to do and leave their families for free to come here and sit through that. It wasn't an appropriate presentation for that purpose. And so, you know, the the job of the the board that y'all voted on to last month for the other engagement isn't to educate the people on, you know, how BPU works exactly, or, you know, all the little details or how how what BPU does for you. It's to learn from the folks who are being, you know, harmed the most by these flat fees. What can help the most? What is what are they running into specifically? And getting the fixed and flat costs removed from them from the electric side and the water side. Volumetric charges are much more beneficial and program can really help people that the board has control of, not the UG side. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Next person in the room that signed up is C.C. Main. You can state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the board.
To Sierra County, Windack County. I wanted to mention that pilot fee. That pilot fee is for infrastructure, and while the UG does collect it, if you actually knew what the pilot fee was based off of, is based off of a couple of different things, including what the federal government pays states in order to use theirs, but specifically with utilities, they have to promise to keep up things like pavement and infrastructure and things like that. And since that's in there, maybe since you want to raise our light bill, you might want to, as our representatives, go over there and tell them to cough up that portion for the infrastructure out of that, out of the pilot fee for that or or investigate it and see what I'm talking about because it is, you can you can look it up, you can Google it. But I also wanted to read a couple of sources from your website. The BPU homepage, it says, for more than 100 years, the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities has provided safe, dependable water and electric services across Kansas City, Kansas, as a non-for-profit as a non-for-profit utility, public utility. And I'm gonna stop there. And then I want to move to another website called publicpower.org. You can go there. It says, like public schools and public, like public schools and libraries, public power utilities are owned by the community and ran as a division of the local government and governed by a local city council or an elected or appointed board. Community citizens have a direct voice in the utility's decisions, including utility rates and the source of utility and electricity or utility or the source of electricity used to power their lights. So when I come and I tell y'all that we own it, we do. And it's not like we all pitched in well, I mean, that is, if y'all want to depend on the history of the bonds that we gave back in 1911. But as far as the community owns it, when you call yourself a public utility, it is owned by the community. And when we vote you guys in, we vote you in to represent us, not to help the unified government collect more money. You're supposed to fight or at least say, go with what we say, what the people who voted you in. And we say that we don't want higher utility or higher utility rates, and we don't want to keep on paying the pilot fee. And if we are going to pay the pilot fee, then what you want to charge us for, get it from out of that pilot fee first because you guys are do the infrastructure, if that's what you guys are raising our fee for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Ken Snyder up. You can state your name and address for the record, and again, you have five minutes to address the board.
Ken Snyder, Rose Hill subdivision, Kansas City, Kansas. I've gone all through these rate hearings, and the one thing I want to say, tell the whole truth. Tell what's really behind these outrageous increases. It's partially to cover these obscene salary raises that we've seen. Is it also the real reason to cover all the discrimination cases that are sitting on some micromanager's desk? Is it the fact that BPU has a higher supervisor to rank and file ratio? We haven't seen that compared in all the studies and ad nauseam that they came up with. So let's compare that. Let's find that out. We're talking about this 90-day cash on hand. You can't get it now. Why are you trying to go to 120 days when you can't even make 90? And I've heard from sources that there isn't any procedure on the books that says that you have to have 90 days, let alone 120. There's no requirement out there for that. Y'all worried about your bond ratings. You ought to be worried about what's coming up in election time. This whole thing needs to go back to the people that started it and say, let's let's look at this another time. Let's take this whole thing about adding fixed fees to people who can't afford it already. Let's put it back where it should be. Let's tell some of these people in these high-ranking positions, if they don't like their salary, there's a door. We can find somebody to replace them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone signed up online? Okay, so we'll move from public comment section to general manager, staff report. First item on the agenda, continuation of 2020, 2023 electric and water rate hearing. Bring it back over to you.
Thank you. Angela, do you need to do anything on a preliminary basis?
I do not. I think we need to have the hearing officer on the line.
Good evening. My name's Ken Moore. I've been the appointed hearing officer for this rate hearing. I want to continue this matter, and just as a matter of summary, the rate hearing initially began the the evening of June 14th and went for just under four hours. It was continued at that time till the morning of June 15th and went another just slightly over three and a half hours. During that time, BPU staff and their consultants consultants presented information regarding the proposed rate increase, and there were significant public comment and also question and answer period where BPU staff responded to the public's questions. There was also a presentation by the Sierra Club, who has filed as an intervenor on behalf of several BPU rate payers, and they have submitted a brief to which BPU staff has responded. At this point in time, I'd like to turn this over to Kathy Peters, who is the attorney to present for the rate hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Kathy Peters. I'm here on behalf of the BPU. Teresa Woody is here. Do you want to enter your appearance?
Thank you, Kathy. Teresa Woody, counsel for the Sierra Club and its members who are rate payers for the BPU.
Mr. Moore summarized where we are. I'll just briefly reiterate, a public hearing notice was given more than 90 days before the hearing. You have now had the public portion of the hearing and the technical portion of the hearing. As Mr. Moore said, the Sierra Club filed a post-hearing brief, which has been provided to you. And the BPU staff responded to a few points, and that's also been provided to you. And, Mr. Moore, I would like to ask now that those be entered into the record.
Those items will be so entered into the record.
And I'll make just an aside, we have learned so many things dealing with Zoom and post-COVID that it's just amazing that we're doing this the way we are, but I commend the board for your attention to all of the things that you have had presented to you. The BPU staff has has provided a proposed order to you. And that has been also shared with the Sierra Club. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we turn it over to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Thank you, Mr. Moore. What I'd like to do to proceed next at this point is, I would like, before I will entertain any motion on this proposed order tonight, I would like to get comments and questions that any board member may have about the rate hearing itself, about the rates, about anything else you have questions about with regard to this subject matter. So, Mr. Haley, I will open with you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everyone who's taking an interest in this. This, of course, is my first consideration of these increases that are proposed to both our electric and our water. As has been noted, and I think very well presented during the briefing that we had on those two consecutive days and the discussions that we have for myself, a novice, it was most informative. It was quite an education to understand thoroughly the position that our utility is in just not only as a service provider or manufacturer and provider, but also one that needs to sustain and to enhance our existing infrastructure. That was what was most dispositive, at least for for my education and to give the serious consideration to where an increase, if any, would be would be merited. We look at our aging infrastructure and the concerns where an area that is that is in need of service, and we look at the balance of bringing that into spec. We asked the questions and rightfully, why has this not been a matter ongoing of deferred maintenance that has been done all along? I asked the question, and some of us are wondering too, what we've done with, I think, an infusion of significant dollars. Someone said 10 million at point, the one-time monies that have been made available during the post-pandemic that our utility is in receipt of and how that is not being applied to them. You know, what's very interesting to me, Madam Chair, fellow members and those that are here, staff and those that are here, is that it's been so long coming. I requested some information. Some of you have have been provided with is, what did we do last time? What is what's happened under previous incarnations of these requests? And some of that information came forth. It should be noted that in 2009, I had my notes in front of me. I didn't know I was going to be first, Madam Chair. But in 2009, a special master was appointed to review, Mr. Turner, I think his name is George Turner. And that report, I think, from legal, which I requested, has been provided and looked at some areas as to how this utility, what now 14, 15 years ago, was running and where and how we should be looking at these increases and also how we stacked up in the region. This was the special master's report. Ironically, a year later, it should be noted, and that information too, if it hasn't been provided, I will see that it's forwarded to each of you with legal's permission, of course, led to subsequently, believe it or not, the board ratifying ratifying increases in both electric and water rates and substantial ones, higher than we're looking at now. Again, I don't have the numbers in front of me. If you come back to me, I do have it in my bag and we can circle back. But I want to say it was 7% for every year for either water or electric, and then 10% for every year beginning in 2010. So I'm saying all of this to say, what's before us today is smaller, certainly for both requests, at a backdrop of a time of great need to repair our aging infrastructure, which should have been done all along and should have been done with supplemental, if you ask me. That's in favor of. My concern is, and the reason why I don't know if a vote is going to be taken today or not, but my concern is, well, yesterday was the 4th of July. And if you're involved in public service, as I am, you go to a lot of different events. And of course, people that look at us, members of the board or elected, maybe you get some of this too. I went to a couple of things yesterday for the holiday. And foremost on everyone's mind who's living in Windack County is whether or not with the way things are going, livability and the ability to stay given different income requirements will be possible. We have populations and some of well-meaning that are saying, as we've seen, some of us have noted across the across the way in our our neighboring city to the east, Kansas City, Missouri, the pushback for real property appraisal and what that taxing would mean and how many people are having to make decisions as to if they'll remain in their homes. That's Kansas City, Missouri. And believe it or not, we're a half step behind that here in Kansas City, Kansas, when it comes to real property appraisal, when it comes to the ability to look at sometimes stagnant incomes to supplement the increase in real property taxes that will be due to the UG. Finally, let me say there are other costs for livability and top at the top are the need to have electric and water. We are that sole source for those who live in Windack County, well, who live in most of Kansas City, Kansas, or most of Windack County. And so there is no option. That rate increase, these rate increases for those who can least afford them, as has been suggested in some testimony, but is borne out will be a deciding factor for many as to what their quality of life will be, and in some cases, if they're even are able to remain in our county. We have lost in Windack County since the census, since 2020, more residents than any other city in the state of Kansas, just under 3,000, according to an estimate. Who picks up that when, you know, where budgets don't shrink at the local level? Who picks up those costs? How are they born? As the chief ongoing monthly tax collector for these UG charges that are foisted on the utility bills, I remain a staunch supporter of seeing that split out and that the UG taxes would be a separate bill or separate and that it would not lead to, if not paid, an immediate disconnection of services. And I also remain a staunch supporter of looking introspectively on those resources that we have that lay dormant from within the utility, whether they're old plants that we have that could be leased or since they're underutilized or what other revenue generating possessions, if you will, or properties, if you might, that we have, Madam Chair and members, that we do before we foist on those who in many cases can least afford it an additional burden for them to assume. I'm sorry that this sounds a little bit rambling. If it does, I apologize. I didn't know I was going to be first. I do have some notes, and I can go right back through it bit by bit, if you'll allow, after I get to my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Groneman, do you have any comments or questions tonight?
I, you know, I've listened to all of the all of the hearings. I reread the the questions and comments that were provided in the transcripts. And my takeaway wasn't that the BPU doesn't need to to raise rates, but that there's a segment of customers who truly are struggling to survive. And that we are, and these these this segment, they are disproportionately affected by any increase in the in rates. It doesn't mean that an increase isn't needed to maintain the system and the viable viability of the utility, only that we need to do a better job of finding ways to help those who are struggling so that any increase doesn't just add to the problem. We need to look at look at fees, fixed fees. I've been an advocate for a consumer advocate for a while now, somebody that would help our customers find the assistance that they need, whether it be utility assistance in paying their bills, energy audits, weatherization. If there's money out there, we need to find it and we need to get it matched up with our customers. And I think the best way to do that would be to bring on somebody in a position to act as a consumer advocate and make sure that, you know, we get the money and our consumers get the money that they need if there's money out there. Sierra Club, you know, they have an agenda, and it's not all bad. But their main topic was the shutdown of the Nierman Power Plant. Well, we've gone from whatever we were at to 48% renewable now. And we take advantage of the the wind subsidies that the federal government had out. And I think that we'll continue to take advantage of any And I think that we'll continue to take advantage of any thing that comes down, down the pike. If there's money out there to be had, I'm, I'm sure that as a board member, I'm sure probably as a board, we would, uh, we would encourage and instruct our staff to look for those dollars that, uh, that we could find to use, uh, to help, you know, with our rate payers and our rates. It's, you know, this is, you know, the shutting down in Nierman is going to happen sooner or later. But it's not going to happen overnight and Nierman is one of our largest assets. And we're going to need to protect it. You know, it's, it's, it's like an old car. You know, it's not as efficient as the, as the newer models, uh, burns more gas, does more things. But it's what we've got and it's what we need to work, it's what we're working with. We can't afford to go out right now and, and, you know, come up with some new generation, whether, whatever, whatever that is. So we need to maintain that asset. We need to put oil in it and keep it running until we can go out and find, you know, find another type of generation. I, there has been, uh, discussion and talk about the Integrated Resource Plan. I think where the staff is working on now, they, it was some indication that they're going to present something to us later, uh, in this fall. And once we get the Integrated Resource Plan, I think we'll be able to look and answer a lot of the questions about what the future uh, of generation in, uh, Wyandotte County, K C K, what it'll be, whether, uh, what that, what, what that will look like. But it's not going to happen overnight. So we just need to, uh, remember that, you know, also the, uh, Sierra Club didn't, uh, address, you know, any of the other areas that we need, uh, you know, increases in, uh, for, uh, costs arising in distribution. We're going to have to build substations and, and, and upgrade substations, transformers, water pipe, water treatment, uh, you know, the facility, the chemicals, the costs are rising, all those things are rising. I think it's, we see that, we know that the costs are going up and that we're going to have to do, going to have to do something. The other major asset that we have other than the, the power plant is our employees. We need to make sure that we protect our employees and that, uh, we are able to offer them a competitive, uh, salary and benefits. We're in a, in a industry where, and I've seen it at, at the county level when I was in, in the Register D's office. I saw it at the state level when I was up at the Department of Revenue, where you would, we would just train people. Just take I T, for example, we bring I T people in, we train them for a couple of years. They get to where they could finally do something. And boy, they're off, off somewhere else and they're, they're getting picked up by, uh, by some other company and paid a lot more money. We need to be able to continue to offer and, uh, comparable salaries, competitive salaries and benefits to protect our workforce. Yeah, everything's going up, uh, you know, but, you know, the bottom line is, uh, I, I feel, and I, if the vote is tonight, I, I will vote in, in favor of increasing, uh, uh, the rates. But we also need to do a better job in, uh, assisting our customers. Uh, make sure, especially the ones that are struggling, that they're able to, uh, get through these tou- these tough times. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groneman. Mr. Mylan, do you have any questions or comments this evening?
Well, I'll be brief. I'm starting to says, if you don't deal with reality, it will deal with you. Let me repeat that. If you don't deal with reality, it'll deal with you. I listened to comments via Mr. Haley that's going back with Mr. Turner, who's an ex-G M. General is longtime, known quite well, been master plan. I'm going back with some thirty years, listened to four or five general managers talking about the direction of this utility nationwide for a period of time. My recommendations started some twenty years ago. I recommended that rate increases should be done at a proportion level where the public can afford it. Two to three percent every three years. That'll balance the budget, take care of infrastructure in time to come. Our water system is a hundred years old in two thousand thirteen. Now it's two thousand twenty-three, it was a hundred and ten years old now. If you listen to me, as a board member, some twenty years ago, make sure we raise it no more than three percent every three years. In three years, that makes nine percent. Very small portion that public can still afford. Their answer came back very strong. Well, Mr. Mylan, if we do that, the public won't like it, industry won't like it, commercial won't like it. Well, so be it for over the day. If you don't do with reality, it'll deal with you. Well, here we are today. Passing with, well, the water department hasn't had a raise in ten years. Twenty years ago, I said, do it three percent, three percent, three percent. We wouldn't be here today. If you don't deal with reality, certainly it'll deal with you. Selective format. I haven't had a raise increase in five years. Three percent, three percent, three percent. Who can feel three percent increase in our economy? Although we're the smallest county in the state of Kansas. I listed all the complication button is too high, they choice too much. But the bottom line is, we've got four or five other entities, so you'd be pleased to be on trash collection. Sure choice. Pilot. Don't worry. All that money is collected by us. That's why they call us the B P U, the, the cash cow for a number of years, in case you young folks don't know what that means. That means all the money the B P U collect, everybody was depending on that from a city standpoint. Bear comment. But my point is, folks, all the things we talk about, we need to do this, we need to do that. The staff brought you back a fantastic, well-defined analysis of what each department need to do for security. The raise rate has been presented. Sure, nobody likes to go with two percent for next four or five years for what the department or, or the, excuse me, select department and six percent for the water department. I understand that. If you don't deal with reality, it's going to deal with you. That's where we are. So without all the implication, I'm saying that I'm going to take the staff position, doing a budget. I support them totally. But let me keep in mind, this board position will come two ways. Listen to residential, commercial, industry. They tell us where we should be. Let's not have a position. We do two things, agree or disagree. They would increase or reduce it. Two choices. So all you hear, all the implication, our goal is to say yes or no, we agree or disagree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Mr. Bryant?
I have spent many days wrestling with the appropriate action to take on this rate case. Having an eighty-five-year-old mother and a sister on disability who both live in K C K, I understand the hardships brought on by the past couple of years of rising costs. I also know that we all need the utility to be there for us with reliable electricity and safe drinking water. I have watched the funds needed to maintain our utility dwindle to the point of being unable to remain on schedule with required maintenance. After much deliberation, I have made my decision on the rate increases. But I would like to issue a challenge to our U G mayor and commissioners. Seeing that nearly every home has received an increased personal property bill based on the twenty twenty-two valuations, I would assume that the city will see a windfall in their twenty twenty-three revenue. I challenge the commission to use some of these new dollars to lower the fees and charges presented on the U G portion of the B P U bill. The rate hearing presentation illustrated an average increase to a resident as ten dollars for electric and four dollars for water. I am hopeful the U G staff can find fourteen dollars worth of reductions to offset the needed maintenance costs to bring our utility back on track. Let's all work together to move our city forward without adding to the struggle that our citizens are feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Well, as always, trying to base your decision on the needs of the utility and the impact of our community is, as Mr. Bryant said, been weighing on all of us, I'm sure. Since the rate hearing, I'd just like to stop right now and take this opportunity to really thank staff for all the work they put into, um, the rate hearing and uh, all the materials that we've gathered and, um, that were presented. It's not any easier for them than it is for us up here trying to make a decision. And usually people come to the microphone and tell you how horrible you are. So I just want to say you're not, and thank you a lot for all the work that you put into this. I totally understand our water situation and a water increase. And I don't want our, I don't want our citizens to be the Jackson, Mississippi's or the Detroit, Michigan's. Um, that's not going to happen in Wyandotte County. I also understand the exorbitant cost of materials to keep our water safe and drinkable and, and how that's risen. And to understand that, you know, you just need to go to the grocery store. And everybody understands the rising cost. What, what I need to make a better decision is I wa- I was given the list of every, um, every improvement project that we need to make. And I know two on the water, um, side are, are really made, they have to be done. But if I could have some sort of priority, it would help me to figure out, um, how we go forward. And I'm also having a little difficulty with the E R C. I've been studying my own bill, trying to figure out exactly what that number is going to be. I've, I've, I've read the formula and I still can't figure it out. I, I need some more basic information on, on that for myself to make a better decision. And when I'm trying to make decisions on how I'm going to spend my money or what I'm going to repair and what I'm going to put off, I usually have a couple of different options. And I look at all those options and say, okay, this is what I can do today. And then maybe next year I can do this or next month I can do this. I need for staff to help me figure out what we need to do right now and how much of these projects. I know we need to start looking for that cash buildup, but I, for the way I operate, I need some of those answers now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. So, uh, it, it is perfectly acceptable for me to ask questions of both staff and the consultants tonight, is it not?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, so just like, uh, Senator Haley, this is the first time I've gone through this process here and, um, like it or not, you know, I am an attorney by day. And so I look at things unfortunately through that lens sometimes. And, um, I, you know, to me, uh, we are calling this a rate hearing. And I understand that, that we had some components to it on June fourteenth and June fifteenth. You know, we received, uh, testimony on June eighth, so a little less than a week before the hearing began. I know that the cost of study, you know, the, the cost studies were out there. And it is July fifth today and we are being asked to make a decision on this. And I am not an economist, I am not an accountant, I am not any of these things, right? And, um, but I have poured through this information and it still leaves me with, um, some questions that unfortunately I don't know that folks are going to have answers tonight. And I'm, if you don't have them, that's okay with me. But, but they are questions that I have that came up as a result of this. So I, I guess with that, um, I guess I'll have, uh, Mr. Brown, Ms. White, and maybe Lori, can you guys come to the podium for me, please? And Lori, you may be the best one to answer this. So, um, from, so when you guys started working with staff, right, to, to come up with the, the actual cost of service studies, uh, what, what is, what did that timeframe look like from, from start to finish? Eight months, weeks, I don't know.
Not quite a year, but it's, it started third quarter last year, I believe, at least.
Okay.
We went out for an R F P with, with, uh, you know, electric and water portion. So I would say that's probably about the timeframe we started.
Okay, so eight months?
Yep.
Give or take eight months, okay. And, and the reason why I'm, I'm trying to, to, to point that out is because you guys took a lot of time. I know you guys are experts, all three of you are experts with this, right? And we're being asked in less than a month to decide this stuff. And this stuff is not easy. I think you guys all know that, um, and it's not something we do every day. So thank you for giving me that. Hang on, Lori, just hang on. Okay, so I, I'll ask both of Mr. Brown and, and Ms. White. So can you guys tell me in pretty simple terms, what percentage of the fixed cost on both sides, so on water and on electric? What percentage of the increase is attributed attributable to the fixed cost? Does that make sense?
I don't know if I can give the exact percent, but for water, I would say it's very little. Most of the increase is coming in through the volume charge because most of the costs, the capital costs are related to the distribution system, which is recovered, those costs associated with the distribution system, the pipes, you know, the mains, the pumping, the pumping reservoirs, all of that, that's recovered through the volume charge.
And I, I would say on the electric side, it's more the inverse of that. Because generally, you know, water rates are generally have very good alignment when fixed and variable cost and the rates and the cost of service. Electric utilities do not. And there's, it's mostly a fixed cost, so your, most of your charges are in variable charges. So we did make an effort to put more of the increase towards fixed charges and raising the demand charges for commercial account and residential accounts and fixed charges for like the customer charge for all accounts.
Okay.
More of it was on the fixed side and the variable side on the electric side.
Okay, so of the three point seven five percent that's being proposed on the residential side, right? I've got that number correct? Okay. Does that, does that three point seven five percent incorporate the increase of two dollars on, to the customer charge? Okay, and, and so what percentage of the three point seven five percent is attributable to that?
I have to model up, I'm looking quickly. It's, it's spread over a lot of charges, but, um.
And, and if you don't know tonight, that's okay.
I don't know, I'd be.
No, no, I, and no, I understand.
I'd hate to say something that's incorrect. I can absolutely calculate it specifically for you after the meeting.
That, that would be helpful if, if you could, please. And then I believe, uh, changes were being requested, uh, to the rate manual, right? To accommodate a couple of riders, right? And some other things that staff had proposed along the way. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'm having a difficult time figuring out where those inputs are in the appendix in the rate manual. Um, I know where the riders are, right? I get that. But the other stuff, I just don't know what's been changed. So would it be possible, um, for you or for staff to provide us sort of where those changes occurred?
Yeah, we should, I mean, but of, of anything, we have a legal red line up between the two dock. Yeah, we should, I mean, anything, we have a legal red line up between the two documents of the original and any changes that are made.
You, you just said one of my favorite words. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, so would, would it be possible to? So one of the things, a large thing that is being requested, and a couple of other board members have mentioned this tonight. One of the things that's being requested is a change to our financial policies. And to require us on the electric side to have 120 days of cash reserve on hand on, well, in addition to that, also have 120 days cash reserve for the ERC, right? And we'll get to the interplay between that in a second. And then on the water side, 100 days of cash reserve on hand, correct? Okay. Have the models been run with any lower cash reserves on hand? 90 days, for example?
I'm sure we did in the process of coming up with the plan.
Mm-hmm.
We could easily run that, though.
Okay. And, and so on the electric side, you know, and, and again, I've read the study, I've read your testimony, I was present virtually for the morning of the Thursday, but I was also present all of Wednesday, the rest of Thursday, right? So I, I watched all the presentations and everything. Where did the 120 days come from?
That, that comes, it generally comes from the rating agencies, and they will generally align certain financial metrics with certain bond ratings. And there's typically a range within those rating agencies, within those ratings. Typically, the range for single A, you know, you're single A, A plus, or we'll separate triple A, single A, double A. The range for single A is from 90 to 180 days, and to get to a double A rating, it's 180 to plus. So we wanted to get you firmly within to that range, the risk, to, to avoid risking a decrease in your bond rating. But we felt that going to 90 alone and just hitting that bottom benchmark probably wasn't safe enough, and we felt getting a little bit farther into the range would be better to sustain that single A rating.
Okay. And you are aware, there's no doubt that you are both aware, Ms. White as well, where, where this utility sits today with, with cash, days of cash on hand, right, with our cash reserves. We, we are below 90 today, and we, since I have been on this board, I have never seen us reach 90 days, I just have not. And there may have been a time in the past where we did, but we're, we're not there today. And so given what you know about the demographics of this community, would your, your recommendation is still 120 days of cash reserves?
I think that's, that's where it becomes a policy decision.
Sure.
I think our, our job as consultants is to educate you on what the outside world sees it at. I absolutely think consideration of the demographics of your community are appropriate in your decision.
Sure. Okay, thank you for that. So I guess what I would ask then, well, let me ask before I ask for, for those models to be run with different inputs. So the cash reserve for the ERC, and Mary touched on this a little bit, and I'm still trying to understand, like, how this is going to play out, right? I understand what we do today with the ERC. I understand that we speculate what our cost is going to be, what our energy cost is going to be, right? And sometimes we miss that target, so sometimes we over-recover that and sometimes we under-recover that from our customers. And based on whether it's an over or under recovery, we have to go back to the customers and either refund it back or make up for the, the difference, and we do that generally over a quarter span, correct? Okay, and so, and so if we do that, how does, how does this reserve fund come into play? Because I've read in parts where this is part of the 120 days of O and M, is that, is that accurate?
It's not 120 days of O and M, it's just 120 days of the fuel and purchase power.
Right. But, and, and it's no more than, I believe Mr. Ferris's testimony said it was no more than $3 million per quarter, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so.
The, the target is 1.5 billion per quarter.
Yeah. 1.5 per quarter, 6 million annually, 1.5 per quarter.
But did the testimony not say more than 3 million per quarter? It would not exceed 3 million? Did I miss that?
Does it cap it at that?
Mr. Ferris, did I get that correct? Okay, all right.
So that's the, the high end of it.
Okay, got it, okay. And so, so 120 days of O and M, cash reserve is here. 120 days of fuel cost, fuel and purchase power cost is here, right? Never the twain shall meet, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Is the ERC a restricted fund?
It is not a restricted fund in the sense of bond indenture or anything like that.
Could, could the utility use it for something, that reserve for something other than ERC?
I would say that could be identified in our financial policy that we do not use it, it's only for fuel and purchase power costs.
Okay. Because I, I think I would have expected to see the word restricted in the financial policy, and I didn't see that, so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't misreading. Okay? All right. Okay, so. So if we have an, an overage, if we, well, no, if we, if we've collected under in any given month, right, what the ERC is established at, how does the, how does the reserve fund come into play? Or does it?
The reserve fund, I mean, our, our anticipation of the reserve fund is to, to build to that 120 days. And that is to help us with any volatility such as, you know, power market going crazy or whatever during that time. Our anticipation is that 120 days, once we get to that 120 days, you know, any, anything will adjust the ERC reserve with any of the overage. We're, we're building that ERC over time. I mean, we're not, we're not just, you know, getting to our anticipated 27 million quickly, that 20, you know, that over time is out through 2027.
Okay.
So can I slip a question in here, Rose?
Please do.
So is that going to be billed on my bill, the way it's billed right now?
It, yeah, it'd be a part of your ERC rate.
It'll just be on my bill that says ERC?
Yes.
That's where it'll be?
Yes. We, we are not anticipating breaking out the reserve.
Breaking out the what?
We weren't anticipating breaking out the reserve on the bill.
Okay, I see.
Mr. Bryant?
Actually, I, I want to dovetail on that. So, so the statement was that the monies would be collected with the anticipation of it taking approximately five years to, to complete the 120 days for the ERC. What happens to the revenue that is coming in that, that, that we would be, you know, basically requesting from all of us customers? Once we get to that point, we're still going to be collecting the revenue based on the rate that would, would have been being used to put into this ERC fund. What happens to those revenue dollars?
So when you said get to that point, to that point?
The 120 days.
Okay.
So, so the $3 million. Once we get, if we're collecting a dollar from everybody in this room to go toward that, in five years from now, that dollars are going to add up to $3 million, and we're there, and we, we did our job, okay? What happens to those dollars from that point on?
Go ahead.
Yeah. The ERC would act just like it does today. So it's basically, the ERC would then work exactly like it does today, where you just have projected spend and then divided by expected kilowatt hours, and that ERC reserve is effectively a minimum cash balance that you use to handle float throughout the year.
So, so the monies that are going to be collected to that dollar from each one of us, that's going to come through our ERC charge only, not through the rates?
Correct. Not through the base rates.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Lori, for that, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Mary and Jeff for the additional questions there. So my ask is this, if, if you would go back, please, and run the model, and, and instead of 120, 120, and 100, I'd like you to input 90 in each of those, and I'd like to know what the impact it is, how, how does that relate to what the increase that's being asked for today? If, if that could happen?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. I agree with Mary, if the folks could provide order of priority on the capital improvement plans on both sides of the House, based on need, right? And I would also, in addition, ask for a timeline. When are these projects expected to begin, and when do we expect completion of them? That would be helpful information to have as well. Did the, did either study on either side of the House, did either study factor in, and, and Mr. Groneman touched on this a little bit, if we modified other fees that this utility collects today, and let's just say we decreased them, right? Was any of that factored into the study?
Are you saying other fees, meaning our?
Disconnects. Disconnects.
No, this was not part of the study.
Okay, but tho, those were certainly listed as other services and chart, right, that they're, they're part of the revenue base. But, okay, all right, just, okay, no, I appreciate that. And then I think, and I know I have gone on for a while, so I apologize, but, so on the changes to the financial policies, and I was unaware of the financial policies that exist today for this board, and I don't know if other board members had it handy or not, but there was, there was a set of financial policies that was approved by this board in 2006. That, that the, this, the financial policies that we're looking at today, they're looking to replace those, right? To proceed them entirely. All right. And those, that, from 2006, this board approved cash reserves of 60 days of cash on hand. And so we would be looking at this point, what the staff is looking to do is double that. So I, I want to make sure that's clear. But one thing I did not see in either the 2006 version or the current version is what happens if we, I understand from a bond perspective, nobody wants to go there, we get it, right? But we weren't going, getting up to 90 days in July of 2022, and Fitch still had us at an A. I'm just throwing that out there, right? I mean, I get where they want us to be, everybody gets where they want us to be, but they still are rating us solid today. So what happens if we don't, other than the bad things, what action can this board take according to these policies if we don't reach 120 days? Is, is there a component to that?
If, if we don't reach based on the policy?
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's no, other than, you know, when we go through our review with the rating agencies and we're not meeting our targets and things like that, that they take that in consideration when they're doing the review of us.
Okay.
Potential for, you know, especially as those, the days of cash keep going up, you know, because 120 used to be what Fitch said was good, and now it's 100, 180.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it's not so much, there's no penalty for not meeting your financial target, it's just that, you know, when we're going through the review, they recognize that you're not meeting your, your targets.
Right. Okay. No, I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all three of you taking the questions tonight, and Andrew for the assist in the back on, on the one. I, I think that, you know, we've got consultants here that have agreed to go back and run a cost, the cost models, based on revisions that, that I've asked them for, so we can look at what's a spectrum of, we know what it looks like today because you've shown us, we know what it looks like with the rate increases because you've shown us that too. And so I'm asking, because I think this is the biggest component of this entire study, and the biggest, potentially the biggest impact that could be had if we modified that today. So, so that's what I'm looking at. And so, you know, I, I think I would, I would, I would prefer to know those answers, I would prefer to know the order of priority on the capital improvement projects on both sides of the House prior to putting this to a vote. So, I mean, as I, as I sit here tonight, I guess, Angela, I don't know the answer to the question. I have read, I know it's not going to surprise you that I've read the rules of procedure. So, so I understand we could continue this rate hearing if we had to, but I'll ask you, am I reading it correctly?
Yes, it could be continued, or if someone moves, conversely, if someone moves for the, to approve the order, gets a second and four votes, then that would pass, or if you would have to continue the rate hearing instead of closing it, because once it's closed, the decision would need to be made within a certain amount of time.
Understood. Thank you.
Can I ask just one question?
Of course.
Timeline for the construction projects and everything? Are you looking over the full five-year period of, of what we're putting in there?
I am.
And timelines for all of those projects?
Yes. And I'm hoping that the timelines come out in conjunction with what the order of priority based on need is, right? So I'm hoping that's the case. I'm sure it is, but I'm just hoping that's the case. So. Thank you all very much, I appreciate that, you guys can take your seats. Um, yes, go ahead, Bill.
Okay. I just want, on that last question, just to also make this part of the record, the timeline for those projects are based on what's known today, okay?
Subject to change in less than a year, so if there's. Understood.
There's other things, economic development, things that come, that may kind of put our plans on a tailspin, and we may have to reprioritize things.
Sure.
It's just based on what we, what we understand today.
Sure. There might actually be federal dollars that are available next year, too, so, I mean, it could go our way, right? Okay, I'm going to move that we continue this rate hearing.
I second that motion.
Motion to continue this rate hearing has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
May I ask for a clarification, are you going to put a date for the, or leave it open?
Can we do the next board meeting?
Yeah. How long? I think, how long it's going to take for them to gather the information?
For us to review.
And for us to review. How long, Lori?
When, when would they be able to have the information to us to review prior to the next meeting?
We can commit them to have it for the Friday before, or when you get your agenda out on the Friday of the next board meeting, which is the 19th?
A week from next Friday?
14.
So we can provide that to you by the 14th?
By the 14th.
Hang on one second. Angela, do you want to ask the hearing officer if he's available on July 19th?
Yes.
Or do you want me to?
I think you heard your question.
Mr. Moore, did you hear that?
I did, I'm checking.
Thank you.
I am available.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori. We have a motion to continue the rate hearing to the regular session of the July 19th board meeting at 6 o'clock. It's been moved, it's been seconded.
And for the record, since it is hearing, can the second?
Second it again.
Can you second that it, that is your understanding, is the 19th?
I second that motion on for July 19th.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Boy, a bone of order.
Yes? Yes?
Make it clear, will this be a one-day rate hearing, yes or no?
Uh, Mr. Mylan, we're not asking for a rate hearing itself, we're asking for the information that's been asked for tonight.
Rephrase that. This information for this one day only? Or we going to drag it out more than just only 14?
As I sit here today, I would expect it to be to July 19th only. I'm not willing to commit to that. But I'm, but that's what I expect as I sit here today.
Is that can be just one day, are we going longer after the board? Just drag it on, 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 what we trying to accomplish? Have we tried some specific information we ask for Lori and her staff? Therefore, the 14th, we'll take care of it, but we need more time than that, so I'm asking.
I don't know what the output of, of the data is, so I, I, I'm sorry that I, I don't think I can answer that without reviewing it. I, I can tell you what my intention is. My intention is, is to continue this to July 19th. Period.
And I still, the question is, will that 14th day take care of your question, what you, you're concerned?
Will it help me have a more informed decision? I think the answer to that is yes, it'll help me have a more informed decision.
Good and basic to me, is what I'm concerned, with every sample. The purpose of the meeting on the 14th?
It's on the 19th, Mr. Mylan.
Right. To clear up some information on the 19th, is that correct?
I hope that the information that's provided to the board on July 14th answers the questions that I have asked of the consultants and Lori and staff tonight.
So the 14th, you think will be sufficient enough for that time, right?
That's what, that's what I'm, it's, it's, I'm not the one compiling the information, Lori indicated that they could compile it by then.
Are you comfortable with that 14th days? Please. I mean, to drag this out here, it, it, it is a monkey type deal, come on, let's be specific.
Am I comfortable with the 14th?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's all I ask for, of somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan, roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
And like normal, I will let the hearing officer rule on that motion.
Well, based upon the board's motion in the vote, this rate hearing will be continued to July 19th at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we require board comments tonight, board, or?
Does Mr. Johnson have any?
But, no, of course, Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments?
No other comments, thank you.
Okay. Does the board have any other comments this evening? On our, a motion to adjourn, please.
This is Jeff, move to adjourn.
This is Mary, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.